Next up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any other agenda items? Public laws?
Two twelve, one point three, two twelve.
Any other proposed agenda items?
Wait, what did you add?
Uh, at taking action on the two public hearings we just closed?
Oh, okay.
I just called them out by number.
Um, anyone, any other appro- uh, agenda items? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, have a comment? Who'd like to go first? Ann?
Hi. Uh, yeah.
And Ann had, and there's something in front of you, uh, all from Ann that she dropped off for us, so.
Uh, I know that you're considering the chicken law tonight, backyard chicken law. And I just wanted to say that, um, there have been towns that have considered and rejected the backyard chicken law. Uh, I don't know if you read my letter to the editor, but I talked about it as a tidal wave. Actually, when I researched it, I discovered that more towns have rejected it and have approved it. Um, they rejected it for a couple of reasons. One is noise. Um, we had a recorder, which is, which is not working right now. Guess what one chicken sounds like? So you can multiply that by eighteen chickens, five chickens, and it's definitely. Um, also, there was the factor of odor. Um, odor is very, very strong. And, uh, I've spoken to a number of people who are tenants line, um, who, whose parents have chickens. They said that they are so noisy and that the odor is so bad, it just does not log in residential area. I started to investigate complaints, um, and I called the Pinellas County Code Enforcement. It took forever, first of all, to find out who actually enforces, uh, code. Um, and it took hours, really, of investigation. I only found out about this two weeks ago. And I spoke to a woman and she said, uh, well, she, uh, had gotten a lot of complaints. And I said, well, what were complaints about? And she said, roosters. And I said, but roosters aren't allowed. She said, no, they're not, but we have plenty of roosters. Um, and she said that basically they were down from thirty-nine law enforcement agents to nine law enforcement agents, and they had no time to investigate anything. You know, to check if chickens were there, if people were following the codes. I then called the, uh, Brooklyn Police Department to find out who was from Chong. They said, what chickens? This is Brooklyn. So, you know, you have law enforcement divisions within areas that don't even know what the laws are. Um, Binghamton and Sarasota both had the same, uh, complaints about roosters. Now, I started to look at some other aspects of this and discovered that, um, chickens are used as packing material. I mean, roosters are actually used as packing material, uh, when these chicks are sent. You know, they're mail ordered. Um, this sexing process itself is just so invasive and so cruel that, uh, you know, I don't even wanna go into details of it here. Um, but they are mixed in with, with the, uh, with chicks that are sent. There are also, it's a very, um, bad sexing process that it's often incorrect. You end up with roosters, and lots of roosters that end up in the mix. Um, we're going to see a shift of wildlife into residential areas. Uh, we're going to see all of the insects, you know, that are attracted to the excrement, rats and mice, and, uh, also coyotes and foxes and raccoons and, uh, all of the animals that like eggs and chicken feed and, you know, excrement and whatever else is there. Hi, this is Kim, sorry. Um, and we also have, um, neighbor disputes that we would have to contend with. About five years ago, somebody shot up a dog in the Sagittis and killed him because he was, um, you know, chasing some of your poultry. And the police said, well, there was nothing they could do about it. Um, he had a right to protect his property. So these are the kinds of things that can erupt, you know, when you have a densely populated area. Um, we're talking about bringing these animals into a densely populated area, which is what New Palt village is. Um, it's definitely going to affect property values, um, even though you're not allowing, uh, the coops in the front of the houses.
Bring it to a closing.
Okay.
We have, we may have other people waiting to speak, listen.
Well, we're on the rear foot. Um, you know, you're not allowing the coops in the front of the houses. If you're trying to sell your house, you're gonna have people walking around and wanting to, uh, say, what are those coyotes there? And, um, what are those, uh, what's all that chicken wire? And, you know, what's all that noise and what's all that smell? So it's not going to help property values or house sales at all. Um, and then you have the health aspect, um, where, uh, I was listening to an agricultural specialist talking about how people who have these coops really have to put rooftops over them in order to, um, in order to keep not only hogs from predating on the, uh, animals, but also to keep birds from dropping their excrement, uh, in and wiping out an entire flock, uh, which can then get transmitted to domestic animals and from their causefully. Like, I'm being too alarmist about it, but, you know, these are all active definite problems. Um, so it's a slippery slope, uh, as well. It can go from chickens to ducks to turkeys to pigs to cows to sheep. Um, and we just feel that, that I feel, that that this might belong to residential area. So I hope that, you know, the rose colored glasses come off and we're looking, we start to look at the downside of backyard chickens. Thanks.
Thanks, Ann. Awesome. Kim?
My name's Kim Foles. Um, you called me really by surprise with closing the two things, the agenda levels and the children's law under. So I guess my, my public comment would be, can you comment on where we are as far as the, uh, site plan departments, the two family dwellings, is there, has there been any work on that? Or are you just holding this public hearing because we had to do that in case of a problem closing before, or?
In regards to the two laws that we, we closed the public comments tonight, we did ask Legion to take action on both of those laws tonight to discuss passing them or holding open, doing whatever we choose to do. But, uh, that, we're just not there yet in tonight's agenda.
Okay. She, I think, is, you're from Penn, so.
Do you, are you talking specifically about that Caffrey's project or about the laws that we're talking about this evening?
Well, no, I understand what we, what we did when we, we talked about the changes that we're trying to put forward, the code stuff. So, and I think that's what we're talking about. We, we all knew about that, but we're here, we heard about it, we're not gonna have to repeat that again. We know that. So I guess my question is, has he, is there any progress in that? And there was a meeting that was held on Thursday, and it's turning to engineers and everything else, and I'm just wondering.
With Caffrey's projects specifically?
Yes, yes.
Um, I am not comfortable talking about that right now without having anything in front of me, uh, 'cause I don't want him to speak. But like always, you can call the building department and they can give you the most updated information. You're shaking your head, are they not giving you the?
We thought that someone was gonna be discussing that.
No, th- these laws are not specific to any one project. So the specifics of any particular development don't come up in a discussion whether or not to pass the law.
Okay, well, there's a deadline for that. There's a deadline for July, July fifth, I think it was, where something was gonna be appealed to the county. I think we're just trying to find out, can you comment about where we are in this process and what's happening with the law? You know, take the names out of it. What's happening right now? Where does this stand right now? Is there any?
Yeah, I know, okay. I think you're, I think you're confusing two different things, or you're commingling two different things.
Okay.
Um, there, the issues about meetings or deadlines with the county or what, uh, that's got Caffrey's specific project. Has nothing to do at all with the law that we're discussing. So what we're gonna, in a few minutes, we're gonna be discussing the laws that we just closed the public hearing on. And so that's the update on, on the laws, which would prevent future, um, projects like this from going up without site plan approval. Um, the particulars of what's going on with Mr. Caffrey's project, I'd kind of, I'd prefer to refer you to the planning board, or the planning board, the building inspector, just because she has the most updated information. I'm sorry, Matt, you keep shaking your head. Is she not giving you the information? Okay.
But this is, this is not grandfathered. In other words, we, once we act on these two laws, once we act on these two laws, they are not grandfathered. The project that you're specifically addressing is under the old zoning and has to be dealt with differently. Well, to, um, if the building inspector, I think, will comment on that, that my understanding is that no building permit actually was approved.
Correct.
So when you talk about grandfathering something in, this is not grandfathering it, because the building permit has not been approved. That's my understanding. It's not when you actually put in the building, the paperwork for the building permit, that you go in from that date to grandfather someone in. It's actually an approval of that building permit. So his particular situation shouldn't be dealt with separately, because as far as we're understanding, is that he was never issued a building permit? It's not being considered at this point.
And look, and like, and like I said, Kim, it's, um, it's very, it's, it's, you know specifically what you're asking for, but we're not prepared. We weren't, I, I mean, I didn't have time to do my homework to be able to really answer it well for you, so. And I know, and just, you know, too, that there were, there were, you know, a series of filings and different paperworks, and I, I'm, that's why I'm hesitating to answer it. It's because I wanna make sure that, you know, we're on television and with the press here. I wanna make sure something so sensitive is answered accurately. I'd rather say nothing than give wrong information. But, um, if, if you are having trouble getting calls back, I'll be happy to follow up. And I can, I mean, I have you guys email. I can just send you something tomorrow, once I have staff I can talk to during the day. Is that, I mean, is that fair?
That would be good. That would be good.
Sure.
So I could share that with the neighbors.
Yeah, I, I can send you guys the most recent update and, and, um, and, but again, it's, when the discussion of laws happens, it's gonna be absent any of the particulars. So it's just on the merits of the village as a whole going, 'cause we're gonna live with this for a couple decades, and that's the conversation tonight. Any other, yeah, please?
I didn't, I was gonna like to, I, I just wanted to ask a question. Can you tell me if I can ask it now?
Sure.
Uh, my question about the grandfathering is, is there a possibility at all that that application would be deemed faulty because of some issues that are happening with it, whether it was complete or whether, whatever, that it may not be, is that a possible app? Is that an avenue that it might be considered not really an official application if it was faulty and then go under the new?
Again, if, if I answer that, um, if I answer that, uh, wrong, then there's some lawyers sharpening their pencils in the background, so. Let me get, let me double check and be very, very sure that I'm giving you the precise information.
That's, that was my question. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Erin?
Yeah, he said you were gonna discuss and possibly act on the two laws that you just closed the public hearing on. I still see that on the agenda.
We just added it.
I did.
We're very efficient.
Okay. Is that Tom?
You have to get your own tongue.
I was here already.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'd just like to speak maybe on the chicken issue. My name's Roberto Bianco. Um, I'm just gonna introduce why I'm involved in the issue and what I've been doing over the last two weeks, uh, since the issue came up in the town and in the village. I live over on Plains Road, so it's outside of the village. But we have been petitioning, uh, town members going door to door for the past week, uh, to get signatures in support of a chicken ordinance, uh, in the town. Um, and I can tell you that the overwhelming response has been in support of such ordinance. Um, I have seventy-five signatures right now, and I've only been going door to door for five days. Uh, so people in the town support it, and I'm gonna start going door to door in the village as well, and I'm sure people in the village will support it as well. Uh, I just wanna address some of the concerns that were brought up earlier. Um, Pinellas County, the county that's being used as an example over and over again in the arguments against a chicken ordinance is a county of nine hundred thousand people, uh, that includes the city of Saint Petersburg in Florida. So Pinellas County is not New Paltz. Um, it's a very different kind of density. It's a much higher density. Uh, it has a different character than New Paltz. Uh, here, you know, in New Paltz, we have more open space than that. Uh, so I think comparing New Paltz to Pinellas County is kind of, um, it's a bad comparison to make with regard to this issue. Um, also, I have no problems with kind of legitimate concerns with regard to chickens, but bailing one belief with, uh, certain arguments about noise concerns, um, and cleanliness concerns is not a great way to win the debate. We know that the people arguing against the chicken ordinance just flat out don't want people to use animals for domestic purposes. Um, and that's the reason that there's such a heated, um, base and vocal base against this. So if, you know, if that's the argument, let's make it. Um, let's not try to hide, um, under a veil of noise complaints and odor and cleanliness. Um, and with regard to that, you know, there are already chickens in the town of New Paltz. I've been going door to door for the past week. I've encountered a dozen households who already have chickens. And guess what? The sky is not falling. Uh, we have chickens in New Paltz. Coyotes are not invading. Um, neighbors are working it out on their own for years. They've been doing it. So I just don't think, uh, the issues being brought up have, uh, a bearing on New Paltz. Because, again, it's not Pinellas County, a county of nine hundred thousand. So, thanks for the time, everyone.
Thanks, Ann. Do you have a rebuttal?
Well, I do, yes. Um, yeah.
But, oh, uh, but very, uh, but respectful and very, very brief. Again, we don't have time to have a long back and forth.
Right. I mean, I think that, you know, the noise and the odor, uh, complaints were definitely in Pinellas County. That wasn't the only county. Um, that's a reality. This has nothing to do with the fact that I do care about animals, of course. I think we all do. And I know that Ariana does. Um, but there are very real issues here. Um, there are real issues of noise, real issues of odor. And I've heard that from people who are in the business of chickens. Um, there's, you know, also the ecological shift. That is definite, that's going to happen. So this ha- this cannot be fluffed off. I mean, I could go around my neighborhood too and I'd have casually spoken with people and I could tell you that there's a lot of opposition to it.
Um, thank you, Ann. And thank you for being brief. And if, I will just say one thing, that, the, uh, we haven't actually dis- even set a public hearing yet on a chicken ordinance. So I think tonight's discussion is whether we should do that. So I would ask, maybe I think, and I asked for the rebuttal specifically because I think both Ann and, was it Roberto? Um, really elo- eloquently laid out, basically, what we're gonna hear at the public hearing in a couple weeks, to set this out. So now we have a little bit more time to think about it. So if you have other concerns about the chicken law specifically, um, it might be best to save it, um, for the public hearing, when we set one. And then it's all on the record and we can have all, that debate all in one place and one time and hash out all these issues.
So there's no action on the chicken law this evening?
The only action tonight would be to set the public hearing for, yeah.
Or to discuss ideas among ourselves.
Assume that's assuming it's, you know, if it's something that's worked, that's another option as well. Um, yes?
I just wanted to add my voice to Ann's concern. Uh, I don't know what, uh, study or has been made about having chickens in a densely populated area. Um, I do think New Paltz is dense in terms of neighbors, backyards, you know, fields. And we also have children running around, and, uh, I know that, uh, there have been some, um, public television, uh, reports that, uh, uh, animals have been, who are, is threatened to kill them because of, uh, changes in the ecological system. So I, I really feel that some investigations definitely have called for.
Thank you.
But I do want to clarify a few things that were said. Number one, the, the laws that are on which you're proposing, there's not roosters. Roosters are not.
Say it loud, please.
Roosters are not going to.
Uh, but I, I am very, uh, much aware of that when I moved here in nineteen sixty-one, there was a rooster running around and why did they have trouble following it?
But my point is, we're not nineteen sixty-one and all before us could be discussed bans roosters. That's number one. And two, Roberto, it's absolutely correct. There are already chickens in the town of New Paltz, and I know people who have them, so.
Uh, I'm gonna, not, if you've already spoken before, then, hold on one second, Peter, 'cause I wanna see if there's, um, in the back, is there someone else? I thought I saw another hand up for public comment? No? All right, Peter, please?
Well, first of all, Plains Road, um, there are agricultural districts in the town of New Paltz, and it's perfectly proud to keep chickens in the agricultural districts. And plains are always enough to see as roads in the village typically. There's much greater density here. It's a totally different nation. That's a, a total, this leading to, well, to, uh, this leading us to the chickens are okay. Makes absolutely no sense. Now, there are some legal issues in New Paltz, just being very casual about it. First of all, there is a federal law, federal regulations. You have to get in regularly to keep livestock. How's that enforced? Well, see, I think they're gonna have livestock nations coming down here, or chickens. I don't think so. Um, there's state law. There's a whole code called Ag and Markets Code. The New Paltz police and the state police don't know Ag and Markets Code. They know the general deal code. Right, that it's a violation of the deal code.
Pause right there. This law that was being proposed, uh, have you read the text of the law itself?
Yes.
The one, uh, this says the building inspector is the one who's gonna be inspecting these. Um, so it wouldn't be the police department being called on it. It would've been largely in the course of routine inspections.
So the, yeah, well, my question would be that if you now put another law on top of those laws, uh, on top of the federal law, on top of the, um, state laws, you put an, an ordinance on it, on top of that, the enforcement is going to be by the building inspector, and you expect, the building inspector will go around and file up in complaints?
Yeah, that's what she does.
Or, or she'll ins- inspect the chicken courts?
Mm-hmm.
Even, even if there's no complaint, there'll be an annual inspection of chicken courts?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. They all have to be registered.
And there's gonna be a licensing fee.
A licensing fee?
To cover the cost of the inspections.
It's, it's all in the, in the ordinance.
It's all in the law, yeah, yeah.
And that's gonna cover the cost of the inspection, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, there's, there's one more aspect that, uh, I think, I don't know if you consider that, but, um, chicken feed, if it's left on the ground, which you will be, will attract roams. Mice and rats will be coming in. Roams attract predators. They'll attract, they'll attract foxes, they'll attract coyotes. Definitely shift the new environment in here, in, with the, with New Paltz, you're attracting predators. Hawks will be coming in. The environment is gonna be shifted. When you do your, um, environmental assessment, I don't think it should be a casual neck deck. I think you really should take a hard look to see to what, what did the environment is gonna be shifted once that law's enacted.
Hmm. Thank you, Peter. Uh, whoever was first?
Um, Susan Mark, I just moved from Woodland Drive in the town to, um, Lutuwe. And I've lived in an area where we've had chickens for a while in the town, and, um, I haven't noticed any kind of bad change in the ecology, the environment. I do think, and it seems to me that the ordinances aim at doing that, at keeping good management of it through our licensing fee and inspection. Um, other things that come into account, rules that, that, you know, you can enforce. And I've, you know, you have to just make sure people are responsible, um, owners. But it seems to me that the ordinance is here for doing this, and secondly, just speaking from firsthand, people have had chickens, uh, in a couple of places, right off Plains Road on Woodland, for a couple of years. Um, I'm an avid bird watcher and nature, uh, person, and I haven't noticed any kinds of, uh, huge changes in the ecology of Woodland Drive, where we have homeowners who own chickens. And that's all I'd like to say. So I, I think it's a nice idea to give people this choice and, um, that's what I was gonna say, people.
Thank you. Guessing that.
But where, where can a person see the actual, I mean, you have a warning of the actual new law or code or whatever it is?
Yeah, is that up on the website, Katie?
I don't think it's up on the website, but I do have a copy.
'Cause I've been poking around the website and I've seen a reference to it, but I haven't actually seen.
Okay, yeah, we can add that tomorrow, right?
Yep, I can.
It'll be up on the village site tomorrow, the full text of the proposal.
The reason the discussion dropped is because we haven't finished.
Right here?
Well, no.
Discussing it.
It's written. We, but each of us has some questions, and until it's totally refined, then we will move to call for a hearing, and at that point, it's a hearing of the law, and that appears on the website. You know, proposals of, maybe we might have it, aren't on the website. It should be, because it's not ready to go yet.
Well, that was a good reason.
So I will not be putting that on until we have a, a defined.
A defense and results of our conversation later tonight, when we talk about this.
I was just curious whether, you know, just thinking about the, what this gentleman said about, you know, some sort of non-urban village, whether they could just be, like, you could zone it out, whether they could be a chicken zone or not, so. I mean, I can understand if they're, if, you know, if, if you're living in close quarters, you wouldn't want your neighbors on both sides to have, you know, like, twenty chickens each, but, you know, it's a reasonable.
Part of the, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
A reasonable number, you know, like, uh, most of the time when they sell animals like this, that you have to buy half a dozen. You know, that's, I don't know what the reason is, but that's, that's what you have to do. So, you know, maybe something along those lines could be considered, so that, you know, we don't have chickens walking up and down the street.
Yeah. You know, if folks, if you, if you've, if you've, if you have questions about the, the chicken law and haven't read it yet, um, please do so. I think it'll answer most of your questions, and we do have at least one topic.
It'll be up tomorrow.
It'll be up tomorrow.
I see that chicken law discussions definitely.
Hold on, um, Erin, yes?
I'd, I'd love to read a lot of the proposed, the proposal, but like, um, that woman said that it's online. I was always thinking it should be online.
We're gonna, you see if you.
I didn't explain why or.
Well, well, actually.
Nobody's saying read the proposal. We can't read it if it's not online.
It wasn't, the, the correct version wasn't included in our agenda packet, so it will, it would be online if it were, but we got a copy of it at the table tonight, so if you want, I'll give you mine.
Yeah, as I said, we have copies up here and it will be on the site, website tomorrow. Um, and not, yeah, not, you've already spoken a couple times, Ann, about the chicken law, that we're not even having public comment on. Um, please, um, bring the comments back to the public comment when we have our public hearing.
Public comment.
Um, if it's not about the chicken law, please, feel free. Uh, any other comments not chicken related? No? Good. Um, now, I need announcements. Any of the trustees have announcements?
Oh, yes.
Oh, boy.
I do, um.
Yeah, but not, not with the public engaging, just amongst us.
Right, but we can overhear.
Yes, you can watch, yeah.
But you can't talk.
Right.
You can send him.
We should start, start our republic on the, uh, hold your peace.
Stuart has an announcement.
While Stuart is trying to find him, I'd like to remind people this weekend at the Allen Memorial Library there.
Yeah.
And Saint Joseph's Best, uh, Saint Joseph's Best as well.
I think Joseph's Best, they, they promote the same weekend that they are.
And I'll be there.
Okay. He's in the gallery.
They're kinda like the, they're kinda like the weather team down here at the end of the table.
I do have an announcement. I wasn't gonna, do it first, of that.
He would, he would.
Apparently, I'm third. He's found now.
He found it?
I, I found it a long time ago, actually. Uh, I was just waiting for everyone to come to order here. Um, I would like to announce that the, for the consolidation study, the outreach, the public outreach committee will be meeting here at seven PM on Monday, July twenty-three. And there are members of that committee that have in- indicated an interest. However, if there are other people who are interested in serving on that committee, and the only qualification you have to be is that you're willing to come and attend the meetings and, you know, do the work with the rest of us. And so anybody who would be interested can, uh, contact the village clerk or can contact me at, uh, Stuart Glenn New Paltz Trustee at gmail dot com. Uh, but we certainly encourage anyone, uh, to be on, you know, these committees because this is really important. So it's seven PM, Monday, July twenty-three, here at Village Hall.
And you don't have to be a village resident.
Thank you. It's on my calendar.
Uh any other announcements?
It's on my calendar.
Yeah, this I have one.
Actually, it's on my calendar, I don't have a chart.
Um so recently I took over the liaisonship uh to the Woke Hill Valley Rail Trail Association. And we met for the first time yesterday, it was very delightful. And they wanted me to issue a formal thank you to trustee Glenn for his service and expertise serving the community.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
And that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Alright, I'm gonna rearrange some of the things on the agenda to get people home, to most number of people home fastest. Um so let's do the chicken law first. And then um I guess action on the two laws and then we can do a little bit of time proposing.
Well, one.
Uh we have to do executive session for that and I'd rather not wait, have people waiting. Um so chicken law first, so Ari, this is the the one we wanna be, this is the right one?
Oh, okay.
What you got a hard copy of at the table tonight, yes.
Except there's that one comment, is was there one thing you thought might be changed?
Um no, that comment was there, but um it specifies for commercial use. Oh, I gave you my copy, you're gonna throw it away.
Was that there?
Um it specifies that all of that means uh is surrounding commercial purposes and therefore it doesn't matter in terms of.
Okay, it's a moot point then.
Individuals, yeah.
Um Sally.
Question, what are you thinking of for a licensing, excuse me, fee?
Two thousand, you got that?
No, um um I didn't actually have something in mind, that's something I want I wanted everyone's input on.
Hmm?
That's something I wanted everyone's input on.
Okay.
Well, I know that I I believe, actually, maybe Anne you would know, is the rental fee to register as a landlord of the village, I think they charge them a hundred bucks a year for register?
The inspection?
Fifteen bucks a unit.
Yeah. Fifty bucks a unit, is that what it is?
Seven hundred fifty dollars.
So it'd be per unit then, so fifty per unit? Well, imagine this would take less inspection than that, um but fifty dollar fee.
I I just I'm gonna propose a hundred dollars.
So we charge garbage collectors, no, two hundred for garbage.
But I mean, that's kinda what I was, that's like, I mean, it it's not something I really had in mind, but it's the number that came up, so that sounds good to me.
That's what you were thinking. Because if we're going to need to perhaps hire somebody to help the building inspector, cause I think it is important to have inspection, that this money will offset that.
Well, I think. Exactly, and and a lot of this will depend on how many people even choose to do this.
They might, after.
Um you know, if it's a small handful, then it's not really gonna be a a real like, you know, time either, yeah, exactly.
Mm-hmm. That's fair. Now, the question i- to my mind, Ariana, is do you want in the law that the fee will be set annually or do you want the fee in the law?
I I like the idea of setting it annually, I feel like we've done that with other things.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is I think direction we should go in, so we have one sheet with all the fees.
Um. Exactly, uh there there could be like a I I I've been looking up um other communities, like they have kind of like just set out fee schedule, with things like that.
Right. So make sure they have the licensing fee will be set annually.
Yeah, and I think that that'll be good because we can see how it goes and if we, you know, wanna set it the same rate next year.
So that would be, uh I guess.
Let in the law.
Yeah.
Um and one of the things I wanted to add, I guess, um i- it was in response to the comments about feed. Um because I read I I read something about keeping it in a me- a metal canister and that's not one of the, that's, I mean, we we did include a lot of the different things that are that are surrounding that, but that's not one of them. So I thought maybe either number five, C, eight, I I think it might, I think that that would be a good place to put it.
And I'd like to suggest that.
Wait, can we, hold on, this can, I just wanna deal with one thing at a time if you wouldn't mind. Um so where are you, you're saying add another line to five C?
Five, C, and then it goes to seven, we'll add an eight, which is actually written on your copy.
That'd be eight. And that would be.
Um and that's the.
And that would be, what would that say?
To um uh that chicken chicken feed is kept in a metal canister. Nowhere and nowhere else, I guess.
Okay, alright. And we're looking at, I guess, the the one right before that would be under five D, adding a a point eight. That would say that um the cost of the license to be set annually by resolution of the board?
Yep.
Just wanna make sure we all have it in the same place.
Yeah, I think that works.
Five D.
It'd be five D and new point eight, five D eight, the cost of such license should be set annually by the resolution.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I don't know if it makes sense with what D is, cause it says assigned statement from the licenses agreeing that. So maybe um maybe it could just be another, it could be E.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Well, we if we wanna set the public hearing, we do need to have all these changes agreed to now, so that's what I wanna be, make sure we go one at a time. So what, you're saying?
Yep. My last one that I had was, um it's on D six. I would suggest that we say building inspector or designate.
And or designate.
Because you might want to hire, you know, a a a spectrum person, so I think what or designate.
I I think that works, or designate, yeah.
It's probably.
That just gives it gives leeway, I think.
It's prob- actually, it's probably the case, but it's just the default, you know, you can delegate, but it's it's redundancy doesn't hurt. Any other uh any other, anyone see any issues or loopholes with the wording? Does that have your hand up on it?
Yeah, um my thing was number one, the number of animals uh actually kept. And I was thinking because of the density that maybe we should just limit it to the six birds. I don't know how many properties we have that are not just a half acre of the village, um.
You mean more than a half acre?
Yeah.
It's in only three spots, Bonduview, Northern Dubna and down by Plains, I think there might be one or two other than that, that would be residential, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. So I was thinking that we could just limit it to six overall chickens, I don't know if that'll.
Oh, I think the half acre lot size is important.
Really, so you think there should be twelve chickens on a full acre?
Yeah.
And they could support them, I think is the thinking.
I think if you had a full acre, which in the village would cause a surprise, you're very few of them, but then yes, you could have twelve.
And and the acreage portion of it actually, it makes sure that you 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 need to have the acreage for it, instead of just ha- yeah, exactly.
We have, okay, yeah. Oh.
You can't have three, you want a quarter acre.
Okay, okay.
Well, it doesn't say that.
No, 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 per what it says is for every, if you, if I live on a quarter acre, I can have half a dozen. If I live on three quarters of acre, I can have half a dozen, I can't, but that's the the.
Exactly.
On a half acre, so you have.
That's a big, you have to prove that you've got lots of land going more than the minimum.
Right.
So any any lot can, any lot can have six chickens on it?
It's it's like.
Well.
Is that what you're saying?
No.
Not for a half acre lot.
If if you have a half acre space, you can have six chickens, but if you have less space, you have less chickens in in ratio, so it's.
Lots of size. So.
Doesn't say that.
All right, so you wanna put that, so add that in.
Well, I'm just, that was that was gonna be my my comment because it's not, it's not clear, it says you'd be limited to a to a half acre lot size.
Well, it's.
It's not clear, yeah, yeah.
Well, probably there's three half acre lot sizes in the whole village and they're all some other size. Uh so, you know, my question was gonna be, does that mean you have three for a quarter acre and one and a half for.
No.
Well, let's instead of wait, let's stop stop for a second.
So I think I think we need to clarify as to what it's talking.
Let's stop for a second, yeah, let's let's get our what we want instead of arguing what the about, you know, debating what this.
Not arguing, I'm just bringing it up.
I changed my wording, is it debating, thank you. With the meaning of the sentence, so I guess let let me ask this first. Um let's just get a sense of the board.
I.
Do you think you should have to have at least half acre land to have chickens?
Yes.
I don't.
Okay.
No, I I I don't know, to straw, what what are the rest of you think?
Oh, you're gonna require setbacks?
Uh well, no, that's not what I'm asking, I'm asking what you think we should do, not what this says, we can change this.
Are you are you are you thinking there'll be setbacks and so forth because the smaller you go, then it's gonna be hard to fit into the setback?
Yeah. Look at C one, maybe it's all setback requirements regardless of the dimensions.
Well.
Right, so I mean, if you had a quarter lot, could you do it?
Chickens get lonely.
What?
Chickens get lonely, so you don't wanna have only one chicken. I'm serious.
Oh, yeah.
You're right, Ariana, you're right about that.
So I'm trying to work through this as quickly as possible, um there's only a limited number of options here. Um because my understanding in the in the law was that as long as you met all the other setback requirements and health code requirements, you should be able to have chickens regardless of your lot size, but.
That's not what it says.
Sally, you can, you keep saying it over and over, but but we can change these words around, so it made something different.
Yeah, so so what we wanted to say.
And we're gonna, we're trying to make sure, find out what we wanted to say, not what it does say now. And if, that's what, that's what we're trying to do, um.
Okay. That's.
So does anyone else have an opinion on that?
Um I think we can just add like an A, A, B and C under number one, that that spec- makes this more specific. Um like uh you know, no less than two chickens, which means that if you have, if it's six per half acre lot size then, you know, if you wanna have three chickens on your quarter acre, I mean, what do you guys think about that idea? Three chickens on a quarter acre?
See, I would go the other way, Ariana, and I would say this is the minimum and you may increase it if you have more property.
So you have to have a half acre and then you can have up to six chickens.
You have having an acre. Otherwise not.
Right, which would have, which would effectively mean that that this law would be not applied to around eighty percent of the village.
Right.
Yeah, so only only the people who've done around Bonduview, Northern Dubna and around Plains Road who have lots of land could have chickens, nobody else.
Mm-hmm.
That's what that would mean if if if.
I obviously told you that.
And that's why I'm trying to get this, of course, Sally thinks it's a good idea. Um and I thought, my reading of that first sentence is, I thought we're on the same page or not. Um so I guess, do we need to pull this off and have conversations away from the table or do we wanna hash this out tonight?
Well, well, what about the idea, I mean, I would be comfortable with limiting it, having the the minimum be quarter acre lot with three chickens and the and
Okay.
but not having but not having less than that, because, I mean, it's one of the, you know, two chickens, I mean, you should have, you know.
Okay. I'll support that.
Okay. And and then, I mean, it still limits who can have chickens, but I I mean, yeah, there's a reason why we're having the ordinance, we're limiting certain parts of this.
So what you're gonna do is change number one to say the number of animals shall be limited to three per quarter acre lot. But if I have a half acre, I can have six and I and on up, but the minimum is three.
Is that, um Ari, this is your subject, is that what you're thinking?
I mean, I guess I I really would have to, I mean, for to for me to understand what that means, I'd have to really know how many parcels.
Did you want, that's what I was asking, do you wanna table this and fill, find that out, find out, whatever thing?
In the village, I. We'd find it, I guess we could find that out.
Right, I was, I I could find that up for the public hearing and move on, like continue with this or or if you.
Well, if we change the law significantly, we would have to agree to the public hearing, so we have to.
Right.
Wasn't saying before, like we, I could go on and say what we have now, what we just came up with and go to public hearing with it and then if everything else, but.
Or maybe.
And then find out about the quarter acre, I mean, I guess it's probably better to do it before, I don't know.
The only, the only thing.
I I appreciate it here, it's, yeah, surrounding it though.
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah, um.
When we set a public hearing, we need the final law of the public community, that's the only issue.
Yes, yes, so yeah.
Can you live with this right now, every, the way we just rewrote it?
Um okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, I mean, I I feel comfortable, I I would feel more, I I mean, I would understand what it means to do this
Well, if we're gonna spend the.
if I can see how many acre, how many, you know, parcels I decide, but I feel comfortable with it. And I also think about like, well, you know, do I really wanna make it, you know, down to like two and a third or whatever, but.
I think it's four if you did.
Yeah, so then so then I would obviously be a little bit compromised.
Well, why don't we find out the impact of the change before we decide whether it's the right one made? Isn't that what we were just talking about doing?
If if she can live with what we proposed, I suggest we set the.
Well. I, yeah, and Sally didn't vote on something else, then then I don't think that we need, I don't think it matters.
Go ahead.
I have a few other comments.
Yes.
Yeah, I I do as well.
Um I I think what the gentleman um said about let's not do a casual uh negative declaration on the environmental impact i- is a good comment, um because there may be several things that we should con- consider about this, uh healthwise and so forth. Um and also in in setting the fees, now I realize that we're not gonna set a fee in this ordinance, but we'll be sending a fee if if we approve this, we'll be sending a fee at that time. And uh is this gonna be kind of a pay as you go situation? Um well, for example, uh we want to collect enough fees
I think.
to pay for the the time that the building inspector's gonna be spending doing this. So you use the analogy of um people who have apartments and you have to pay fifty dollars a unit once a year to do that. Uh I guess we have to think, are we having faith that, you know, it's gonna be inspected once a year and that's gonna be it, or or based on some of this other testimony, are we likely to have complaints and people fighting about it and sending the building inspector out there all the time? I don't know, but I think we had.
Did you have time to check with Kathy about that? Did you have time to check with Kathy about that?
Huh? No, I just heard the testimony tonight, so how could I check with Kathy about that?
I I have an idea that might uh help with that and I saw your your pay as you go note and thought of this um when I read it. Is the idea of if there are complaints and the building inspector is going to somebody's chicken coop all the time, then there can be some kind of fee or fine associated with, you know, maybe not the first time, but maybe the second time or the third time or whatever it is that we often comfortable with, but something like that that would help offset the cost of the, you know, resource being spent. And then it would be like a pay as you go and people who keep their chicken coops nice and clean and have no complaints are, you know, you like that?
I I I I think that that would be a good idea. For example, in some places they have, you have, you pay a fee to have a have your alarm call the police department.
Right.
And if it, and if they malfunction, they call the police department more than X times, then, you know, you have to pay fees for that.
Right.
And so this would be similar and I and I think that would be a good idea. The other question I had is, it says we'll meet all the setbacks. Um do we know what the the setbacks are to have a chicken coop on, say, a small lot, is a quarter acre enough of a lot to meet the setbacks to have chickens? I I I assume somebody looked into that, but I'm just asking.
Um again, that's something that Kathy would be able to answer, um but I, the reason that that was put in there was uh because the intent of the law was to set a minimum just uh for the up to a half acre. The setback to the actors of control that you couldn't, you know, basically have chicken coop crammed right between two buildings, you could address them.
Yeah, I I I think it's a gr- a great rule, I'm just saying, do we know that what that means practically for people with a small lot, are they able to do this or not?
It would depend, it would depend on their zone, they would, yeah, okay, okay. It would depend on their on their zone, their zone of the thing. But I'm h- I mean, it sounds like there's actually a section of this that needs to be rewritten or redone, so could we table this again?
Yeah.
And maybe when it's ready, put it back in the.
Can I tell you honestly something, on times we're speaking on the agenda and I'm gonna move to set the hearing to the twenty fifth.
Please. Well, well, there's nothing really to set for, because we haven't had, we don't have any agreed upon language for a law to publish.
Yeah.
Um and we need some more sections to be added, so.
Well, I mean, we agree upon uh everything except language regarding um.
Actually, I disagree with the changes to point one, um because I think it, I think it'll be a a kind of a meaningless change, it won't really make the law much more effective
Of the.
than if you changed it as it, left it as is, because I wanna just, I wanna see what, how much more of the villages it fol- makes the law apply to, um. But what the, what the other, was there any question?
Wait, say it again.
You said we're all in agreement up to a certain point, and I'm actually not in agreement with the change you and Sally were discussing for number one on the law, so I would vote against having public hearing for that.
W- were you in disagreement?
But uh maybe for other people like that.
I know, and I get to have my opinion and express it just enough.
Yeah, but yeah, but I'm just saying, it.
And let, so let me finish.
It doesn't mean you table it because you disagree.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, um you had just said you moved to set a public hearing to, because you didn't want to talk about tabling it. And that led to the, I know you are, and that led to this, the discussion that in order for us to have a pu- set a public hearing, a majority of the board, you're right, has to agree on the exact legal language.
I'm tired of it.
She's tired of chickens.
Right.
So I thought it best to express my opinion before that vote got taken.
We 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 agree.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Well, so so what what do you think that the idea of a minimum of three per quarter acre lot is no good, you think we should be able to have two?
I'm saying I liked the original language as I read it that said, anyone can try to have six chickens with half acre or less, but only those with more than half acre can have more. And since that, that's the way, that's the way I read it, uh cause it is, you can read it both ways, um.
But I think so.
I just, I wanna know how much of the village this is gonna apply to before I vote for it, that's all. And we can't know that changing these numbers and sitting here, not knowing how many of the parcels this would apply to, um. And if the, if Stu, uh cause Stuart had just mentioned his, the things he would like to see, but we've never had the discussion whether we should add them directly to the law. And if we wanna add those, we need the the language in them, then that's when I said we should table it, if we need time to write more language and actually discuss some more things. Um so we have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for a law that um would not include Stuart's change uh request.
As fee. As cost.
Is there anything else it would not include?
Well, I have other discussion topics.
Well, that's uh we'll have to deal with that after the second hearing.
But is there anyone in the question would be is there a second or?
Oh, it's the well, there's still discussion, right?
I have the more substance of discussion.
Is there anyone, is there a second?
Well, I I wanna hear what Brian has to say before we do this, can we
Yeah.
Okay.
Well you well can we we were having the conversation, we had it, but
Yeah.
Um there's no second, so the motion is out of order, so Brian, please go ahead.
No, I'm Okay, so I I do have some other points, I don't know if I'm preparing them up here at table or even waiting or whatever, but um so for number four, chicken coops be kept in fenced in area including a chicken coop at all times, now does that mean that there's is the coop the house, the chicken house?
Yes.
And then so outside of the house you have a fenced in area like the run.
Yeah, a fence around the
Okay, so yeah. So they have to stay within the run the whole time. And then at night, 'cause later on talks about cooping them, that means that they have to be ushered inside the house, that means you're keeping them out, that's my understanding.
Yeah.
So now let's say now let's
Chicken house.
Can I just tell you something Brian? Chicken coops don't have doors and they don't get closed at night.
Yeah, they do.
They just go in the coop.
They do close the doors at night and there's like a lingo sometimes to
Like a door hack?
I I but that's where my but that's where I'd like chickens drawn.
Yeah, kill when they're gone.
I would too.
Yeah. Yeah. They have a little TV in there that they usually watch a scene
That part they go in there was not because you judge her.
There it is.
Okay.
Okay, so okay, before we get too off top, um so
Okay.
so can that be can now could the fenced in area be a lawn, like can they have full range of the lawn or they have to be within the run? Like it can it just be like well my yard's fenced in, so that's a fenced in area? And then we have the house in the back that I put them in?
Well, yeah, I was gonna the setbacks would define where that would be.
So they can only be in the pending area i- within the setback?
Yeah.
So okay. Now, talking about the setback, we allow the front the side yard and the back, the side and back, right, they talk about setbacks. Now, is does that mean I could like I don't know where si- side begins, front begins, so like how far to the how close to the front of the house can we have the chicken?
It depends on the zone you live in. The side yard requirements and setbacks are different for every zone of the village.
With different zones.
Okay.
So but it's a similar it'll be a similar process to uh you have to yeah get to get a for a shed.
Like a shed. Right.
Because it's those who has to make sure it's not too close to their property, it's not this that the other, it's a fairly simple process and I think that's was the the parallel.
Sure. Okay, so I mean I guess I'll have to ask um Kathy particularly if we're gonna have chicken coops on the side of the house that's like visible from the street.
She could probably tell you if you picture her properties, she could probably tell you if it would fit.
Right, okay. Um I was I didn't notice along the lines of fines and things, I think that's important, some sort of fine if your if your chickens are living in poor conditions.
Yep.
Um also, do we have we don't have anything we don't have the revocation of a chicken license? Um I think that's something that might be important because if there are bad chicken owners out there and who are constantly you know not going by the rules, then I don't think we should be able to have chicken. Um.
Aaron, you only came here 'cause this was on your agenda.
You just come on here and want to take away.
She's like
Um
That's why I brought it up, just to keep everyone laughing.
For the licensing fee too, I don't I didn't notice here when I missed it, is there like a yearly renewal?
That's what we just talked about.
Okay, that that's part of it, okay.
Yeah.
'Cause I think that would be
That's that's what we made five.
Well, okay.
Licensing fee shall be set yearly by the village board at the re-ord meeting.
Okay, so every year you have to reapply for your chicken permit?
Yes, oh yes, this is a yearly renewal.
Then every year you have to reuse one?
It's an annual fee.
No, hopefully
Please, please God, no.
Every year you have to
Okay, so I just so I think really
Yes, I hope the annual
just the revocation of the fees was my big thing and where the chickens are gonna be kept. And yeah, okay, so I think that's all I have regarding the chicken.
Any other uh proposed revisions to the law? Um alright, uh I guess
Sorry Sally, one more time.
I move that we set the hearing for July twenty fifth.
We we can't, we don't have a
You're good, if you wanna ignore Brian's Stuart's concerns, we can, but other than that, we can't, please go ahead.
Well I think these things are important to have a a section on penalties.
Okay, but but can I just say something?
Yeah.
We have had this on the agenda, I don't know how many times, and I think in our respective courtesy to you, these questions should have been dealt with before.
Thank you.
I apologize. But if you only get this statute on the on the night of the meeting, how can you deal with
Well, we've all been emailed.
We've all been emailed this many times.
Repeated it.
We are being
It occurred one, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh just I guess let us know when it's ready and we'll put it on the legislative agenda whenever it's done.
I'll I'll send this stuff to Joe and have him
I'm not going to hold my
So may I clarify that this that I'm not posting anything about the chicken law tomorrow?
There's nothing to post, we need to add some language, so we're still in the draft. Alright, um that's before I fill in my agenda here. No, that's not it.
Yeah.
That's So let's move on to acting on uh I think we've got most people here for the two local laws, right, is that a good chunk of you? And then Craig, is there anyone here for not neither of those things?
I'm interested in um local housing challenges.
Okay, so we'll do the the local laws, take care of Craig, and then we'll do the local laws and then the rest I think is just us.
Mm-hmm.
Laws, laws. Alright. Yeah, I just I just wanna double check one thing here. Two twelve, which what's the number for the first one, two twelve seventeen, twenty three is the
Well, seventeen.
is it dwelling units or is that the principal units? No, two twelve twenty seventeen, one principal building and then two twelve twenty three, which would be the um
Yes.
Site plan.
Site plan, sorry.
Site plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um yeah, I guess why don't why don't we that does seem simplest, um there'll there will be more elaborate uh motion in the minutes, but we do have a uh some language from the village attorney. So I'm gonna take it one at a time and move to adopt uh the proposed local law regarding site plan requirements uh for one and two family dwelling units
as per the motion um forwarded to the board by the village attorney. Site.
Any discussion?
No, th- so that includes the um the minor change that the county planning board recommended?
No, it does not, uh because they're they're um advice is advisory and uh
Yeah.
Okay.
we it doesn't uh bind us and it their recommendation would make it meet a different goal.
Okay, well, I'm just saying I think that our attorney recommended that we uh be adopted with the amendment proposed by the county but not by our own planning board.
Well, that's it's I I the motion I just made was the exact text that he had us, he sent to us.
On the regional Okay, wait, so so maybe that's on, are you on twenty three or seventeen?
That's right.
Which which one are we which of the ones are we talking about?
One or two families uh dwellings, I have a I have a hold on a give me a second. Two twelve twenty three, the motion is to adopt it as per the red by
Okay. Okay, okay.
Uh th- this would be the motion that the village attorney dra- uh provided to us rather than we all this about.
Right, okay. I'm in favor of that.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Can you move it in a second?
Yep. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And I will move to adopt the local law to uh excuse me, uh regarding two principal dwelling units, amending section two twelve dash seventeen uh with the same caveat uh as per the motion provided by the village attorney.
Which which i- which does include the county's minor amendment but not the our own planning boards, right?
Same.
This is I mean you have the same amendment, I I mean
Yeah, I'm I'm just pointing that out, that's that's I'm I'm in favor of that also, I mean but that's what we're doing, right, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other any is, did you second that? Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Aye.
I know, I just I don't wanna I just speak same only s- certainly to a very particular purpose and I didn't wanna say anything that I that I shouldn't
Okay.
Yeah.
We're done with this one.
We're done with that, so um let's I'm gonna mo- move to go into executive session to discuss contracts uh negotiations. Um so we'll be right with you Craig and hopefully we can have an answer.
I don't wanna do the one about the uh
Craig has been here all meeting waiting as well, so um and then we can do the lessons afterwards.
Okay.
Do you need a second for that?
Yes, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we don't take a lot
Oh, please.
I vote you, aye.
Uh
Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We're not doing everything we have to do or need to do.
No, just just this. You guys have a favor?
Mm-hmm.
And we're off for sound, right? Excellent. And Jason has the insurance regarding this, but as I said, it was sixty five pages long, it didn't seem smart.
Right.
Oh, I wanna read the whole thing.
I should quick look at that.
Hello Ellen, nice to see you.
Okay, do you have the uh actually I have a question, we don't I can
Oh.
Nice research.
Um the committees that uh so if if I'm on a committee that's is there a stock on the website where all of these committees will be listed?
No, we're out.
Does he know?
That was your name, let's see.
Yeah. But that's we can put that in, yes.
Alright.
All right. It could be a caveat to our
You guys are are we ready?
I would like to move
We can put it in there.
Hey, you're gonna move now.
We'll make sure you have that on.
Yep, you back on?
It's a nice two hour trip.
Wait, can
Yes.
I would like to move the approval of a one year contract, a concession license agreement between the village of New Potts and do what do you call it, New Potts tax control.
That sounds right.
At New Potts tax control with the understanding that the village of New Potts will receive five percent of approach and the contract is renewable after one year.
I'll second that, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Okay, that's uh signing an actual contract, I should just talk to Joe, is that?
Talk to Katie, uh she'll work she'll we'll have original C R two to sign uh whenever we can get them from Joe, of course.
Katie?
Howard, this is qualifying the fact that first day, we get to rent the first tax.
Yeah. Yeah, right, that sounds great.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh so I'll be talking to Katie, thanks.
Okay, nice to see you.
Just been talking to
Okay.
Have a good one, take care.
Um alright, now Ellen, what were you curious about liquor license? Interested in liquor, okay.
Yeah, she's interested in booze.
So Sally, this is your uh this is your project.
Okay, everybody, this is a policy, this is not a law, but Joe did look at it for us and he was very happy with it, I want you to know. That the building inspector reviewed it, our planner reviewed it, our clerk reviewed it and the police the chief of police reviewed it and who asked me if I would be so kind and also said that the supervisor said there was no question, this the police have always been involved in this process, but he didn't want her to think it was in the process because it's gonna be a formalized public process. So she's okay with it too, so everybody has reviewed it and all we're doing is formalizing something that we have done in-house. The reason that we're formalizing it being the state liquor authority recommends, liquor board take note of liquor license renewals and I think it will do two things. One, we can't be everywhere all the time and if a particular establishment has complaints in the community the community will then know that they've become and shared their concerns with us at that renewal time. And it also is respectful to those businesses that really under the businesses, it sort of recognizes it. But it also gives us the opportunity of seeing to the attached application. If a particular renewal has fifty complaints against it, then that's a heads up for us today, we want to suggest further review, so I would like to move the process.
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
Any discussion?
I have a I have one question, um and what did the chief say about background the cost of background checks?
No, he doesn't, he will not, he they will, there are two kinds of background checks, he goes they would do a local background check.
Which costs what?
But nothing.
No.
The state liquor authority does the deep, what do you call it? There's a term for it.
Investig
When you're fully really looking
Investig
Investigative.
There's a term, that's the state liquor authority's responsibility by law.
Body.
Okay, but but what about for us in terms of the cost, there won't be a cost?
No cost.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question was where would the money come from starting August first, if there's no cost, then
No, no cost.
I mean, I'm totally in favor of doing this.
So my my only question is um it would seem then that the public w- will have the right to come and say what they want when one of these comes by.
They will, we're on our agenda.
But the So so the only way they'll know that is Friday night or something, they they can check to see if
Mm-hmm.
one of somebody's liquor license is on the agenda for the next Wednesday and if so, they can come and
Right. Mm. Yeah.
ask, okay. How often does that happen, by the way, how often do they have to renew?
Every ten years, I believe.
Something like that.
I think every two years.
I received three requests this week.
Right, but we're gonna this is effective August first, so.
Yes, this is due.
Um I guess I'm I can see the benefit. I'm just wa- I hmm. It doesn't seem a good use of our time, because I think that the the complaints are so rare and the complaints we get don't come through this process now. So and the fact that we the only thing we can do is send an a an advisory memo, I believe, to the authority
As an advisory to them, they're being
to ask them, it seems a lot of work to tell the liquor authority um about a problem area when you know if there's a problem with a a particular bar, then we have code enforcement and police to deal with it.
Has not worked, Jason. And I think this will save us a great deal of some of the aggravation that we have experienced together this past year. And I think it also will, if you will, put some bars on notice that perhaps they want to spend a little more time on better self governance.
Hmm.
So I I really recommend you look
I think in in a effort to save time too, I had mentioned um having two formatted letters pretty much
Mm.
and just having a positive declaration and a negative declaration, we could just you know autograph it, send it out, you know, and then the the details would speak for themselves.
Hmm.
Okay, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We are pictures. If we're gonna audit with, we need our pictures.
We could we could like a thumbs up, thumbs down, depending on which one.
Okay.
Yes, Stuart. Um I I think it I think it's a good idea, I I can see a standard letter if we say yes, but I don't see a standard letter if we say no because we're gonna say no because there's A, B, C, D and E, it's been brought to our attention and and we want them to look into it or it'll be different from each application, so
Mm-hmm.
We don't say no.
Well, we
Jason is correct on that, if we send a letter saying attached, please see the following tremendous number of complaints, because we'll all see those.
Well, well, I
Right.
and then please
Okay, what whatever it is we do, I don't think it can be a standard, I would think, I mean or are we saying that we're just getting the comments of asking them on and members of the board won't have anything to say or anything, we're just collecting them and forwarding them? Or are we discussing it, gee, do we have a problem with this particular thing before we send it on, or I mean what what do you anticipate we do?
Well, I think we could we could add, s- you know, I mean if we wanted to stick with a negative declaration letter and then add any trustee comments as like an official whatever or some sort of resolution attached to it, or we could sit and discuss it, or we can have a standard format letter and you know add in the A, B, C, D
Mm-hmm.
based on A, B, C, D, these are the problems we have found, you know, please see the attached memorandum.
I think that's good.
I I I think this is a good idea, the only problem I have with it is I don't know how quick the public will be to catch on that three days from now X far is gonna be on the agenda.
I believe the public will catch on and I believe that had we provided this opportunity
In the past
we would have avoided an awful lot of problems.
Well, even if they don't, I mean we still have the police letters and we still have the building inspector's letters.
And we're still doing what we
So there's still something, I mean it'll be nice if the public comes out, but you know how tough that is, you know, maybe You know, maybe, I mean, maybe they'll check the agendas. Maybe they won't. Maybe we can make a special section for it on the website if you want to discuss this on the road. But I think like no matter what, this is a good step to take.
I think um I I don't know. I'm I'm not sure, but I'm afraid that if we had this in place in task, that it would have um very much exacerbated and worsened the problems that we were dealing with. Because I guess, well, I guess the whole thing depends on how seriously the state liquor authority takes a letter from the municipality. If they if they just go in their recycling bin and they shuttle the office and they're actually making a determination based on their internal standards, because which they must be doing because they don't get these like, we're not required to do this. This is optional. So uh so if 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 basically it's 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 a symbolic gesture in our part.
Yeah.
We're kind of opening up a public forum to for a lot of noise complaint and neighbor disputes, things that have nothing to do with liquor licenses, nothing to do with the standards uh with other things and all for the end goal of writing a letter that may or may not even be read, let alone have an impact.
No.
So if that, I mean, I it's not, I I don't know how likely it is, but I could just see that as a potential pitfall to this.
I think you're wrong. Again, I'll tell you why I think you're wrong. Before you came back, there was a very large meeting of the state liquor authority.
Mm-hmm.
And part of what the state liquor authority told this very large audience of people, including both the mayor and supervisor and the chief of police, all that. He said it is irresponsible thing for a village authority to do. And he urged us to do it.
Oh, sure.
Because that way that that's a red flag to the liquor authority that they need to make. So please check it. That's what we're doing.
Hmm.
Yeah.
There's clear benefits to it. I just wanna
Yep.
See, I should say that the pitfalls are popping in my head. But are there any other discussion on this? Is there a motion on the table?
Yeah, second. Yeah.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Brian, you wanna go next with with Facebook?
Oh boy.
We did buy the internet especially after all. It starts sprucing the place up.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph Gordon.
Ellen.
Um. So the purpose of this is to create official village of New Paltz Facebook page. Um I don't know if anyone's been following the New Paltz group page online.
Not so much.
But I I tend to look at here and there, stuff needs to my feed and I find it, some of it productive, some of it maybe not so much. But the point being is it's good, it's a good resource to be able to give people information immediately. The way I had dreamed it up was not to add an extra burden onto the clerk's office and have the clerk do it um uh updated. I'd I'd prefer all of us to update it and any department heads who thought they had information they wanted to put on to do so and any committee chairs who also wanted to put on any information. I think it'd all be beneficial. I think it keeps it more lighthearted. Um the basic information of the village remains the same, but you know, the the h- the village webpage is the in wh- where most people are gonna get their information about the village of New Paltz. And I feel that's where the clerk posts all that information. It's the hub. This is a little something extra where water main breaks, you know, you toss that up and people will see it in their feed as they're doing their daily reading. If, you know, the, you know, the chair of the planning board wants to post about his meeting, he's not required to, but post that your meeting's coming up tonight and some of them look, hey, you know, everyone's wanted to check out the planning board meeting.
We want public size to hundred twenty fifth.
We want public size to one twenty fifth. Well.
You have to boil your water.
You have to boil your water. Committee meetings for the consolidation. I mean, all this stuff.
Yeah, I think.
And it gives us and it gives us the ability to do it at a whim. It doesn't make it too serious. You know, it can get there if if that's where we see it going.
I I don't I don't know. I'm not up on the language.
The admin status will mean that that we'll all have the ability to add like actual information to the page. Everyone else will be able to post onto the page. But this means like if you wanted to, if I posted the phone number wrong, any of the trustees will have the ability to change that information.
I'm not comfortable with that. I would like it to be the mayor and the clerk. And if I have to see a correction, I'd like to be able to just tell Jason, Jason, there's a mistake here.
When's the last meeting, Stuart?
I also I also.
But you'll notice Brian offered to volunteer.
Well, I also I also thought on CNN as McDonald's and the Aison, and also I don't want it to be any, you know, I didn't want the burden to fall on anyone. I you know, Jason has a lot of things that he has to do during the day.
Oh, oh, we need.
Every we're all working very hard. So I think that if we can all pitch in a little bit.
I I'm not I'm not at all set. What I'm concerned about is say four board members supported X.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna see a fifth board member who voted no putting on Facebook all the reasons why the four should have done.
Right.
And one of the politics of.
And that's and that's why.
The third policy and.
That's that's what I'm trying.
Don't we have a policy?
We do have a a web policy in place and I added the extra little notes to it of no opinion whatsoever.
Okay, okay. You got that in there.
That's why I added that. But I do believe in our web policy. It states you can't represent yourself in the name of the village and you can't post.
Okay. Can we just attach that to this too?
You well, it'll fall under it.
Okay.
It will fall under.
Because because the web policy applies to all of us both too, right?
Yes, yes.
I wasn't sure applying to Facebook area.
So.
So well, well, my question is actually specific to the web policy and how thi- this would apply because there's part of the web policy talks about spending time on social media and if we're gonna have the department heads managing this, how are we gonna
Right, yes.
it kind of seems contradictory in our part, yeah.
And it it does. And and I think that hopefully this, I mean, the intention is that they'll be doing this for professional purposes only. So, you know, like
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I totally I'm not a co- but.
Yeah, like, you know, I I don't picture, you know, any of our particular department heads scrolling through Facebook all day and I don't think this necessarily gives them the ability to.
It's very difficult not to once you're on the hot seat, right?
You know, you can hop down and.
I don't do it, so I don't know.
I generally don't either for that very reason.
Yeah.
But I wanted to ask Jason, as the mayor in charge of department heads,
Mm-hmm.
do you want to give the department heads the opportunity to put things on Facebook without students be personally?
The department heads, yeah.
You don't.
Um absolutely.
Okay.
And I've I mentioned Brian earlier. The I the thought of of having it maintained by none of us and have it uh basically maintained by the clerk. Uh mostly uh actually and sort of Katie in the hot seat, she actually come up and offered the possibility if that was what um we wanted because we're trying to make that office so much information, separate informa- information hub. Um and to have it I guess less to take the politics out and more of the kind of thinking that um if it's a matter of
That's where the information goes through anyway.
Well, if we're if we've plucked up what we're trying to do, but also but the and that's one half. The other half was that um if we do have trustees um and uh the board chairs and commission chairs,
Right, right.
that the quality and consistency of the information is gonna vary depending on interest level and time commitment. So we could have like lots of things from a trustee for a while and then like nothing at all happening.
Sure.
And I thought that maybe, and this is I was just talking about a little bit about, if that ended up being the way we would go,
Right.
you know, having it just really be more automated, like various pers- precise list of information that Katie or someone would have, that this always gets posted up.
Mm-hmm.
And then other things can come up.
Right, that's possible.
By the way, there's never a question, all like all notice of village board meetings or whatever meetings or minutes could be posted up, whatever we decide is
Sure.
should be like a information flow. It could be updated on our Facebook envelope set official site.
Sure.
But that's also that kills all the kind of like hard exp- maybe to it too. It should become a mechanical message board, basically.
Well, well, you know, on that note as well, it could always be that.
Also Katie wanted to be able to post pictures.
Well, that well, I was
Ah!
I I think pictures would be great. I think that I think that would be really light hearted and nice and I think that there's tons of stuff that we can post photos of that are public, please.
I know.
But
I was gonna say.
um I think that, you know, wh- when I thought of department heads doing it, then like Katie felt that her minutes and she wanted them to be up there, that'd be good. But no matter what, we can get minutes from the church website. If Nancy, if we've or we can, if we so choose to direct that department head to make sure that these things are up, if we felt s- um Nancy's audit report or whatever, you know, from the financial, and and we can
He might have a little sleep.
and we wanna require that, we're more than welcome to. If anytime there's like um some sort of emergency within the village and we wanted to see something come from the DPW, we could have, you know, Heather put it up. So I think that there is that ability to focus in, but I still I still really like the idea of having everyone contribute to it as opposed to one individual.
But you don't have to if you don't want to.
I think you. You don't have to if you don't want to, but if you like to, then it then that resource is there, I think.
Maybe if yeah that Katie will be the whatever you the the point person.
We have decided, we have decided that, yeah.
But that's for me.
I mean, I would pr- I would prefer not to, but I mean, if it's it's a really strong sticking point for everyone, then, you know, I I would like to see this go up. I did receive some positive encouragement about this.
This costs one.
Completely free. That means we advertise for free, which is another great, you know, aspect of it. I don't know.
Do you think so?
I'm not I don't really feel strongly about it. I just thought it might be an alternate.
I like the idea of, I mean, if if we if we wanna put anything in there, we could say like clerk or designate. And then if, you know, there's some kind of uh we have like a webmaster internship of sorts, like something like that could be, you know, this person would just be fed the information and they could be posting it.
That's what I don't think we're winning actually.
Sure, C D C would love to send down the Facebook for us. Um but like, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, it doesn't have to be just the Facebook, obviously, but if there was an internship like that, we could put board designate. But that's if we wanna put it at all. I'm not really married to either one.
I think it's a great idea for situations where we have been boiling the water.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't go to our website, but we do Facebook.
This comes about. Well, it goes straight to.
A lot of people found out about that through Facebook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as I might add, there are some people who have their Facebook statuses set that um that they will get
A message in there.
A hit on their phone when something is paste posted to something they're following.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. You know, I was thinking since this isn't a law and it's just a a new proposal
A policy.
a policy, we could do it like this for now and then if we feel that it's not what we wanna see it as in the next couple months,
Mm-hmm.
we can, you know, retool it and add, you know, funnel of information or however we want to do it.
Yeah.
I like that.
I do too. How about I move it with six month review?
That sounds very good.
Second.
Oh, uh any discussion?
Um I'm not particularly a technical person, so I don't understand uh all the nuances between having
Really? The internet is a series of tubes.
It's it's the
That is.
One tube is connected to the two tube. Um so I d- I don't I'm I'm not the one in the family that uses Facebook, so I'm I'm not that familiar with it, but I guess I don't know enough about to say if we have a website and it's up to date, do we also need this other source? And apparently it it'll it's it'll give us something else that'd be helpful. So I'm not I'm not opposed to it. I just don't understand it that well. The uh the one thing I was concerned about, uh if we have people who are putting information in our behalf on our Facebook page,
Right.
are we having liability for things that we have no control over? That I I don't, is that an issue?
I I don't believe so. I mean, you know, the the outlines I did put with it, I I think really limit that to it's gonna be only the work of committees or only things directly pertaining to the village and no opinion. So I think that really limits it to our meetings coming up, there's a parade coming up, factual information that.
So let's let's say somebody goes against our policy and does something else, then is somebody monitoring this for us to make sure, whoops, you know, department head X shouldn't have put that on there. It's not appropriate or something? Is there somebody who will be checking this to see it's okay?
Um well, you know, I think that's part of the benefit of all of of us all being involved. I I kind of volunteer to show anyone who wants to know how to use it to post on it. I'll sh- I'd be more than happy to tutor them to do it.
Sounds like.
Well, the tutoring lessons.
I I offer tutoring lessons, so I would be more than happy.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
To watch it for the time being. I mean, I think that if there is inflammatory things going on, we're gonna know about it.
And we're gonna have a six month review just to see if it's the way everybody envisioned it.
I.
Like Stuart, but I wouldn't, I don't do Facebook either, but my daughter, school district ten, not our school, it's a different school, has a website. They have a beautiful website. But parents who all don't use the website, they all communicate on the school district Facebook. So that's why.
And the t- and the town has one and I think it's been very beneficial for them. Um they get to have the kinds of things that they're working on. I think it's nice.
And sure is the best way to get out if we haven't one.
Sure. I mean, it's a it's another thing. And the next proposal I'm gonna come up with, which will be very brief, is creating a a Twitter to connect to that, which will connect to our status too. So in case of emergency, Twitter that, post upon the status. So if anyone can get to the Facebook page, they'll be able to see it and they can also follow it on Twitter.
You'll just know you can Twitter.
And up [bleep] through that completely. And it'll also update to their phone. So it's it's just another layer of protection.
You're talking over there and under ours.
You guys like us, I know what's going on, Brian.
Stuart, Stuart, Monty's going, yes, you are. They recommend.
Alright, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, we did.
Uh I am for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we did talk about taking a five minute break at nine every meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
So let's take the five minute break. I figure about a half hour when we get back.
Sounds like fun.
We do have an executive session briefly about litigation um and some debate over the Walk Hill Valley thing.
So we should have quick yes.
Yeah, you should have brought the good ones from the place.
Oh, we could do.
The good ones from the place.
Jason, do you have um payables for the
Uh I haven't seen the [inaudible].
We have to do the land zoning conference.
Yeah, no, we've got a couple of things, but the only one that has discussion is uh the rail trail thing.
Yeah. Good.
The for the Southern National Rail Trail Report.
I'll move it.
Uh I'll second that. Um Brian, is there anything about this to meeting last night?
Um they the Walk Hill Valley Railroad Association was curious as to, apparently there were issues regarding bicyclists. They had when this first came to man in January or February and those issues, I guess, went to bicycle pedestrian. And I'm assuming because this came in, get away from bicycle pedestrian area, that this they have been addressed.
But that this this wait, sit there again.
That bicycle pedestrian committee was totally in favor of this and they support the, because apparently there were issues.
Oh, yeah, this came this came through them from Judy Mage who had been at the Southern Hester Alliance uh meeting. But I guess there's been a disconnect between that and the Walk Hill Valley Rail Trail Association.
Yeah.
Um which I didn't know about until I saw that email which I responded to earlier. Um and uh from the chair and I felt bad, but but I guess
I saw that, yeah.
they hadn't really been meeting. There was a turnover in leadership. So I think that that's part of why um they they didn't know. I mean, we didn't have any communication with them on this.
Right, yeah, they they
It's what it sounded like.
they had they had their annual membership meeting and there were questions just from to the members at large, I guess, regarding certain bicycle aspects. And I think it went over to bike pen and it just weren't [inaudible]. I you know, I asked, should we move on this? I think it's even your email where they were.
Yeah.
To go ahead. They're having to.
Well, oh, oh, she did say she responded to that. I didn't actually see.
Well, uh no, I was just responding that you had asked on there already, but yesterday they said go ahead.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, cool. Wonderful.
So we can't pass this?
We can pass this, yes.
Alright, it's removed and seconded and ended discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Um you can remove me from the NICOM training. I'm not able to go.
Yeah, same here unfortunately.
Okay, I would like to suggest that we ask Kurt, not me, and Carl. They would like to.
Well, Kurt, it would be as well above the issues, won't it?
I I don't um is there one of the appeared to be three days in di- three different places?
Yeah, there's four actually.
I mean, is this just getting the approval to for having whoever's on the list, any of us go, if they can go to one of them, is that the idea?
Well, there's
The same agenda in each of the places?
You have to sign up for it.
There are different uh there are different classes at different locations.
Yeah. Um although it actually looks like uh there they do do they do go over the same thing, it's just in different orders. But um some there might be one or two that are completely different.
Some are closer.
Um exactly, but that's that's the main thing is that there's one in Albany and that would be the I I mean, I guess there's also Fishkill, Poughkeepsie area. But we're not going to um the Buffalo Marriott, Niagara, Amherst, um or to the Wood Cliff Hotel in Fairport.
But it is lovely in Buffalo, so you go.
Yeah.
No.
I mean.
Um but so neither of you are going? Do you wanna go?
I I might be able to go one of those days. I have to check my schedule.
Well, 'cause I can't, I I mean, I guess I could go to Albany without anybody else. Um I'm not sure how.
Bus stations. The bus stations are pretty close to.
Well, yeah, I don't know where the bus station is in relation to this.
It's way down.
It's way downtown.
Where's your hotel?
Albany Law School is a midtown and that's downtown, but they have city buses and buses.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're city buses always.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not close to it though.
But I I might be able to go if you wanna put my name on the list and if I can, then I'll draw if you want.
Yeah.
I I we have a meeting?
That evening.
That evening, right?
Wednesday, July twenty fifth would be the ideal one, obviously, because that's the Albany one. Wednesday, July twenty fifth would be the ideal one obviously because that's the Albany one.
Um can we, rather than scheduling this now, can we just have a motion?
I will approve the authorization to send Stuart and Arianna to the Planning and Planning Summer School sponsored by the New York State Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officials and to also then extend the invitation to our planner for the planning board chair Maurice and CDA chair Carl Gray.
Second that, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright.
Uh who we approve the road closure for the Wildcat Epic one hundred?
Um I have a question about this.
You
Second, for purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
Um
The guy's playing chief.
Oh yeah, I suppose she's got a question on her.
I I've got a couple things um and and this actually is in relation to what we approved on Church Street. Um we approved the then a a filming, I don't even know what to call them, but we allowed them to do some filming but we didn't give any specification as to where they should close the street or how the street should be closed and generally when we close Church Street like it's set further back so I think that um in general for the future, I know that we're working on this kind of stuff but um this is an instance where I think we can implement some of these things, um one is that instead of paying one fee for both days, they should pay per day um because the street was closed on Church Street for for filming three days in a row um and I think that there that's a significant effect um I mean it it affects businesses significantly and I think for something something like this is bringing more people and tourists and things like that to the area so it has a different kind of economic return but the filming in particular did not um and this is only these are only things that I thought of after the fact so I think none of us really thought that went through um when we approved it but um but so maybe one and one of the things that I researched is neighbor notification letters that the street is going to be closed so maybe we can have Wildcat do that and and notify the neighbors that this that their street is going to be closed bef- within forty forty eight hours beforehand. Um I think that is a good and really nice courtesy, especially for people who live on that street um but I think in the future for like businesses that might be affected by this, people who live in an area
To give neighbors notification.
that that's something that we should definitely impl- implement.
I think it's a great idea and actually yesterday someone had mentioned to me that sometimes they go back out of their driveway and they have two hundred runners you know running past their driveway and you can you know assume they had no idea that a race was happening.
Yep.
So I think that'd be a great way to and you know you just have whoever's hosting the event put the cost of not applying to that.
So do you want this to apply to this event or for future events?
Mm-hmm.
I mean I I'd like it to apply for this event but I I feel funny just because we don't have we we don't have like something some kind of standard in place right now in terms of the per day thing or anything that and I'm not trying to single this group out, you know what I mean, um especially because it's not like it's something we haven't approved in the past. I mean their website, I I went to see if they were not for profit um on their website because I said well if it's not for profit then you know make but it doesn't say
The request really isn't coming from them, it's coming from the
Well, it's coming from hu- right, which is which is what I also thought of afterwards and I reread the letter um so I I don't know if we should apply it necessarily to this one but it just spurred these thoughts so I thought I'd bring them up in this discussion.
I would like to amend your motion to say provide it, the Houston Historical Society gives a neighbor notification and
I like that.
and has cleared this with the Reformed Church because that's when the interfered with church services.
Why don't we just use the same neighbor notification that we require for planning board procedures, I mean we have like a set number of feet already in the
There's a radius, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably certifying though, isn't it?
But I just meant in terms of
The radius.
radius of how you who you identify as.
Yeah, who is who are the neighbors, yeah, I think that's a great idea, thank you. Um okay, so we can we can do that kind of the that kind of notice, what what exactly does um in in terms of it's just radius, it's not in terms of what the timeframe is.
Well, we have the software we have yeah, the well the software we have, you can plug it in at the radius and it'll spit out a list of all the addresses within a X number of feet of the location.
Okay.
So we can provide that to the race organizers and say those are people, this is what we do with developers, we we give them a list, yeah.
Okay. And get tell them within four forty eight hours advance notice at least.
But like you we should be giving it to the Houston Historical Society, not the race.
Well, there would be the race or organizers would be the judge.
Yeah, or they're the sponsors.
Right, they we'd yeah, the people who sent us the letter.
Yeah.
Um you know and they will pass information along.
And then also be gruelled the you know with the church because that's gonna create some problems if they don't have that cleared.
Be
So that deals with this issue.
Do you want it to be forty eight hours or do you want it to be more than forty eight hours considering the fact that this is summertime, people are on vacations?
I mean they already know that it's happening
Yep.
so why don't we say a week's notice, I mean it's already on their website, they've had certainly plenty of time to plan the event itself.
There aren't too many residences in that area
Which is why it should be even easier for them to send it a week in advance.
unless hell we thought you go to some Houston street but me and
But that's why it would be even easier for them to send it a week in advance since there's less
Yes, and to make sure it's clearly the truth.
Yeah, so let's let's yeah, I think.
And how big of a radius, how big of a radius would it be?
Uh whatever the well ask Kathy whatever we apply for permits.
They may may ring from one spot or this whole
And so maybe are you could maybe sit down with Katie sometime soon 'cause we've got a folder going with some of the you know form revisions and process, we can add all this
Sure.
just even put it in in a in the file and they all have noticed all refreshed and then when we deal with it, comprehensive.
But we're gonna we are going to apply it as Arianna suggested because they
As this, yeah, but in terms of like coming up with new questions to ask and new requirements to happen at that time.
In terms of made that assumption. Well, well in terms of the what do we think about the one day, two day, what I mean should should we be cha- I mean according to our current f- you know the current fees that we charge one would think that it'd be per day.
I would think so too.
Which which means that we kind of had a little bit of oversight about the church street thing um but so so should we apply them per day starting from now or you know I mean we we didn't use it for that, I I don't know, I don't wanna be saying anybody like it's exactly, that's what I'm saying.
That's it for a little bit.
I would say from here like here on out so you know only once
After this discussion is convened, so that's okay.
Yeah, so once we amend our laws.
Or maybe once we get a a revised form approved and ready
Right, yes.
Once we start pre warning people ahead of time, so this is whatever we're expecting.
Yes, right, we can't do I would say we probably can't do it now, I agree.
But if we get another one next week, we're not gonna be ready yet, so.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
But it's good.
Alright.
Alright, so What's the what's the motion on? Uh to approve it?
To the Wildcats.
But with two
And we ha- and you have the caveat?
I I have the caveat that it's the neighbor notification within forty five f- within forty eight hours and that the um that they clear it with their Dutch reform charge.
Yeah, and so use the same pattern that you do for building inspection?
Right.
Okay, okay, so as amended, uh any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No, abstain because I'm on the board of the Hughenough Historical Society.
And I guess I move, do we have those in clams this week?
Yes, there's so many.
Yes, I could hear from one of the
Okay, good, uh so I'm just wait, uh okay, well settled, I'll second, uh is there uh uh any discussion?
I'll
Um is it is that including the budget modification 'cause I just
No, that's separate.
Okay.
This fills in like
Oh, okay, alright, sorry.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye, uh I move we approve budget modifications?
Second.
Um I just had a question, what is what is it going to?
Hmm?
We have a list in the packet.
Do we know?
It's uh
I know, I see I see that but I mean I guess my question is what is Central Garage?
Oh, she's wondering why it's moving.
Oh, that's a question that Nancy could answer.
Yeah. Okay, this isn't as my vote isn't based on that, I'm just curious and I only thought of it, yeah.
Um Yeah.
No.
Central Garage is generally what we do for like um truck repairs, um equipment tools, something like, yeah, it's like basically that's building is Central Garage, I think.
Okay. I guess I was just wondering if there was something that happened
No, just routine.
that we needed to move the money for, that that was more what I was asking, not I I don't you know if it's routine, whatever, I was just wondering if there's something specific.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's moving shifting depending on the season.
Near fund transfer from one line kind of.
Right, I understand that, I was more just asking if something happened that we needed to transfer the money, if that was unexpected or something broke down, I wanted to know
Yeah. No.
but it doesn't matter in terms of me
Actually, it was buy it.
Okay.
Hmm? It was it was to there's extra here and we wanted to buy ahead.
Oh, okay, alright, cool.
Yeah.
Alright, so motion on the floor is
All in favor?
Thank you, is that where we're at? Thanks, all in favor?
Yep. Aye.
Aye.
Uh and Katie will have all s- all the back minutes by the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And we do not need an executive session after all, unless that's it?
Um wait.
Do we need any discussion?
I think so.
Oh, alright.
No, um we're already positioned over the people are coming, so is that just
We're swing ad- we're advertising, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we've we've that one already that we'll already second.
Can you use that?
Use that, huh?
It's going in on Monday, right?
That's the plan?
Yeah.
Yep, I move to adjourn.
I I guess we'll
Alright, uh well that takes precedence, uh there's is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
If you want to.
I think I'm just wasn't sure if we could move to advertising now, oh you know we all need to to go for personally decide to go for now.
Yeah, she's on that.
No, no, I know but I'm saying now we've come like 'cause we came back like we could have decided to try to pull pull again instead of advertising.
Oh, the motion was to advertise, it was interesting.
It should work.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't remember making a motion.
Yep, that's what we redo.
Um I don't remember making a motion, I don't
We're good, by the way, so